The closed session were heard, discussed or considered during closed motion. Mr. Townsend?
Yes.
Ms. Depp?
Yes.
Dr. Ariani?
Yes.
Ms. Kimbrough?
Yes.
Ms. Carson?
Yes.
Do I get it here?
No.
Dr. Corbett?
Yes.
Mr. Cackett?
Yes.
And Mr. Farley?
Yes.
Alright, thank you.
And the next step? Oh, welcome everybody to Prince Edward County School Board meeting. We're glad to see you all here today. We're going to take pledge of allegiance, stand and say the pledge again. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alright, I mean most people have approved of the agenda.
Question though. Do we, don't we need to approve the minutes from September and October?
They are already there.
They are?
Or is that already there?
It is.
Okay, um, they can add.
October ones right here, and the other ones are over.
Gotcha, I just, I did, sorry, I got here late so long, causing trouble. Um, can I add two things, two action items? Um, these would be an update for facility naming, and then a VSBA voting item. Is that allowed? Do I have to turn that into a motion, or we're not allowed to do that?
You wanna add it to the?
To add to where we're gonna vote?
Both of those will require votes, yes.
Sit with me.
I'm not sure the protocol.
So, you could, there needs to be a motion to amend the agenda.
Yes.
So, the motion to amend the agenda would be to add the two items that Mr. Townsend would like to add.
Can I get a clarification on which VSBA's, uh?
And need you all to endorse a position that they've been there on for.
What's that?
Oh.
So.
I need them all to endorse a position that I've been there on for.
Why, so why don't we, um, make the motion, if you, I, you could make the motion to amend the agenda. We need a motion and a second, and then there could be discussion before you take your vote.
Okay, okay, then I move we amend the agenda.
So.
Now, can you check, give us a little bit more information on what we're discussing?
Well, let's, let's, um, so that, so we have a motion and we have a second, and then we're gonna have some discussion.
Yes.
So, since we have a motion on the floor and we have a second, we need to have some discussion, so the discussion could include what the, what the two items are. And then based on that, you would, either there is a vote or there isn't a vote. And if it isn't a vote, the motion dies and you, or fails. Um, and then we could come back and go back, alright? So, we have a motion, we have a second, and now it's time for discussion.
VSBA, I've been encouraged, I'll say that sounds better than action, to Southern Vice Chair. I think a lot of that is due to some of the good work that Lucy's put in over the years. But I've been asked to be the Vice Chair for the Southern Region for VSBA. So that's the first I wanna get that blessed by the board, got that application here with me, before we go to the conference in November.
Got it, okay.
Second thing, we did meet and discuss, and I've got written copies of the recommendations for the two facility naming, uh, table committee memo.
Well, my, uh, my question is, for me, the first one I had no issue with. It's gotta be done by time we go to the convention. But the second one feels like Mike should have been on a non-action item first, so that we could discuss it and then come back and vote on it in December, just so that we have time to talk about it a little bit, think about it before we vote, unless there is a time crunch on that vote. I know it's been a long time that we've been talking about it, but since it's just been brought to the board for the very first time tonight with the recommendation, usually we give ourselves a month to think about it, but that's just me.
The reason I think action and not, and action is one because of the people, who they are, like, I don't think it'll be, we can, we can certainly do that, we certainly do non-action. But this will get it done before winter season starts.
Basketball season.
And both of them, both of the facility names are associated with winter sports.
Okay, I, alright, I totally agree.
But we don't have, you know, we, yeah, we don't have to. But plus, I don't, I don't think, I don't, speculating, I don't think there'd be many issues with the names.
Okay, okay.
Cause we've all heard them before, we're pretty much know the works.
Okay, then I don't have, I, I didn't realize that, pardon, got it.
Any other discussion? No?
So we're talking about motion to add, to amend the agenda.
So we do a motion to amend? Yes. To add?
Those two items.
So we're adding the, yeah, the VSBA.
The VSB I sign.
Senator Vice Chair and Facility Naming Committee recommendations.
Vice Chair.
And naming.
And this is non-action?
Action, action.
Action, we're amending the agenda to add these items to action items.
Sorry for the crap rules, Robert's, Robert's rules and thinking real time.
Good, and you're good. You're good.
That's how you learn.
That we learn.
Fair.
Learn by mercy.
Alright, totally.
I need a motion?
We already motioned.
Yeah, we just need a vote now.
We need a vote now.
Alright, all in favor?
Motion passed, Mr. Foster.
Alright, unanimous.
Unanimous.
Alright, unanimous.
We got it.
Now we need to approve the agenda?
Yes.
Motion to approve the agenda, as I think.
But do we have to approve the minutes from the?
We will, we will get to that, so down here on the consent, so.
Okay.
So, we just did, um, we just did it, approved an amended agenda. And now, based on that, the rest of the, we added two items to the action items. So since we did amended the agenda, we will get to the consent item, which is number 10.
Okay.
We will get to that that has those minutes on it.
Okay.
In just a minute.
So, we're gonna, okay, so, I, I get, I, well, um, so is we approved the consent, we on top then? Add anything to the consent?
No, 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 cause we didn't do anything to the consent agenda.
I didn't vote on the consent yet.
Only part of the agenda we have amended is adding the, um, to action items. So, and, and so, and.
Have we voted, we did vote?
We voted.
Unanimous, alright, now, we have to go straight to the participation committee.
Hold on here. Did, is anybody clear?
I said yes.
So, Ms. Depp, did you have a question?
No.
Alright, well then now we need to change gears to get amended to, and we need to. Do we have any further, any public, okay, well then that's not an issue. Alright, so we go to number eight, awards and recognitions and commentations.
So, yes ma'am, so I, I, this is always a highlight of the meeting when we go in and we talk about awards and recognitions and different things that go on within, um, Prince Edward County Public Schools. So right now, I'm gonna ask that Ms. McClure come up and talk about the early, um, early childhood.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Jones. Um, I am here to, um, bring to you the VQB five improvement honor roll, um, for Prince Edward County Elementary School. VQB five stands for Virginia Quality Birth to Five. It is a program, um, that is statewide in Virginia. Um, it is, in, in this system, it's a system for measuring the quality of public early childhood programs such as our preschool by evaluating teacher and child interactions through a program that we call class. And it's not just, when I started this, I thought it was, you were gonna go look at a class, but it is a very intense program that you have to get recertified every year, and it is one of the hardest tests that you will ever take to pass, and you have to retake it every year. Um, and then our teachers are observed in the fall and they're observed in the spring. And then the state also comes in and observes them in the fall and the spring for the validity of those scores. So those scores are where, that is what goes into the database to determine this honor roll. So we are excited tonight to, um, present the VQB five honor roll, um, excellence badges to Prince Edward County Elementary School. And not only did they, uh, get on the honor roll, but they also got, um, the improvement honor roll. So they showed improvement from the twenty-three, twenty-four school year to the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. So I would like to ask Ms. Vance to come up and I'll present this to, um, Prince Edward Elementary.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Congratulations, thank you, Ms. McClure, thank you.
Now we're at the consent agenda.
I was gonna just commend our early childhood program,
Oh, okay.
cause, uh, I had two family members' grandchildren that's, uh, started and finished, one of them's finished through, one of them's still in there, so, uh, the elementary school, the job you're doing, and, uh, just the excitement that they have for going to school. Excites me, and I've been out of school a long time, so. So thanks, for everything that's happened there at the elementary school.
Thank you, anyone else? Alright, if we go to the consent agenda?
I make a motion, we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second? Alright, we have a motion, second? Second, okay, all in favor? Okay, that's all, everybody. Alright, we're moving on to number eleven, information?
For the update for the elementary school.
Update, yeah.
So, um, most lady could not be with us tonight, but in their, in your packet, you will see how the progression that we've had in the elementary school. Um, it's still, completion date to be in spring of twenty-seven, all of the project completed. So which you could see in October, slabs have been cut back, emergency egress is available on the east side of the elementary school. Footing and building pad has started for the next phase. Uh, they started the site wall footers, um, continuing storm piping and chiller piping, started cutting grade behind building E, where priming wall, gypsum board and painting has, is starting. Acoustical ceiling tile grid has been completed, restroom floor and wall tile started in the administrative area. Interior lighting is ongoing, um, rough ends are continuing to the MEP. Started placing plumbing fixtures, started additions and prepping of the sidewalks. Finished the standing seam metal roof panels, flooring is ongoing, upcoming, um, there's always meetings where we're talking about moving and different things. Review of the new interior finishings, um, and then we're always looking for lead time navigations ongoing. The floor did arrive, at one point it was floating around in the Pacific Ocean, but it did arrive. And it made its way to Farmville. Um, mechanical plumbing and electrical rough ends were ongoing, and gutters are ongoing. And then water retention pond and chiller pad in the rear school behind the gym are getting near completion. So it's busy. Each day you see more and more and more. And, yes ma'am?
I had the opportunity to go on Monday with, um, our legislative board and, um, oh man, I, if you haven't had a chance to get over there, see if you can get Ms. Vance to let you in, cause, uh, it's worth the trip. It, 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 we're not gonna believe what it looks like when it's over. I mean, the, the new part is so impressive, um, it's really unbelievable, so. And, and it's changing so fast, cause I've been there about a month ago, and in a month, how much work they've gotten done is pretty phenomenal. They're working really hard. Looks great.
It does look very nice, and it's each day, it's some, as I said, just something changes each day, so it's always good.
Alright, ma'am.
Appropriations.
I'm not this bad.
Here, wait.
Thirteen. Ms. Jones? Not a thirteen.
Twelve eight.
Ever.
We're good.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, School Board members and Dr. Jones. This evening I stand before you seeking approval of additional Title One, um, funding in the total amount of three hundred forty-nine thousand, two hundred and sixty-six dollars and eighty-nine cents to be added to this current year's budget. As you know, when we start a new budget year, we based our federal programs, of federal money, based on the current year that we come out of. So, when we get the award notification, we come back to you and ask you for the additional funding to be placed in our budget to be used.
Any questions, Ms. Jones?
So, the award?
Right now, you go ahead.
The award notification came recently then?
Um, yes, last month, the beginning of last month.
Two weeks ago, yes ma'am.
So, so the way that works, Dr. Corbett, with federal funds is, when you're writing your federal fund applications, and they're usually due to the Department of Education by July one of each, of each year, you base your funds on your current allocations. And then, once that goes through the approval process, of course, at air school level, and then it goes to the Department of Education for their approval, they, what they call, they tend, they, they approve it. But you know with federal funds, once, cause the federal government year goes October one to September thirtieth, we're July one to June thirtieth. And, and you know a calendar year is January one to December thirtieth. So you work with all these different calendars. And so, once you get your final allocation, you have to come back and if it's more, add it to your budget. So, where it's always, it's preliminary until it becomes final, and it's usually this time of year. So.
And this money we didn't budget for yet, this is like spare new money that we, or get to do something with?
It's an additional money.
Yes, so this is new money, okay.
Any other questions? Ken?
Motion?
Yeah.
Motion to request, uh, request the Prince Edward County Board Supervisors to appropriate additional federal funds to school operating budget for the school year twenty-five, twenty-six.
Second?
Dr. Corbett.
Dr. Corbett, second, hey, all in favor?
Thank you all.
Thank you, Ms. Jones.
Did I what?
I said, thank you, Ms. Jones.
Alright, thirteen non-action items.
Now we gotta do, um.
Yeah, but I'm gonna cause trouble, Lucy.
Oh, sorry about that, dude.
Alright, um, well, thank you all for agreeing to add these items to the agenda. So we go to the conference later this month, November the eighteenth to the twenty-first. And after our special development in Charlottesville, I got outreach by both the SBA and the current, uh, Southern Chair. So, the responsibilities of a Vice Chair are much shorter, and it's not a required, uh, thing to get a vote, but I figure in terms of putting in a strong application, I wanted to get it blessed, and we had a school board meeting in between this and the conference. So, um, I would need the majority of the board to vote, um, to approve it. And then, I would need my chair signature, I would need my clerk's signature, and then I would sign it, and then I will send it off, and they'll let us know at the conference if I am elected as Vice Chair of Southern Region.
I move that we, uh, encourage Kenon to run for Southern Vice Chair of VSBA.
Second.
Third. Alright, the motion is there, all in favor? Okay.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
And these are, these are signatures, but I think this is the perfect time to hand off the next item as well. Think I'll start on opposite sides. Again, I'm causing trouble. So, I'm prob, I'm gonna read this as well, just so it's stated for the record, these recommendations, but also wanted y'all to be able to read about accomplishments of some of our great Prince Edwardians who we hope to recognize. Is there an extra of the one pager around?
Yes, sir, we need it. Alright, here you go.
Uh, we have any old one pagers around?
Yes.
I took one, I took one. Alright, so, back in, I don't remember when Ms. Scott Brown first came to chat with us, but it was sometime either early this year or late last year, approach about Coach Scott. And per our policy, FFA, we are allowed to create a committee, which we decided to build on to do, and I chaired that committee, but a little bit of delay with superintendent searches and such, and other kind of administrative pickups, but we have met and we do have two recommendations. And I would love to, maybe I won't read both of them verbatim, but I'll give you the, the general gist of them. The first is for Coach James Scott, and it would be to name the gym floor at Prince Edward County Middle School, of the basketball court after Coach Scott. So, I'm not, again, won't, won't read verbatim, but respectfully, they're proposing the committee, community, members of the community, that we rename the gymnasium floor at Prince Edward County Middle School to be named in honor of Coach James Scott. Coach Scott served as head varsity boys' basketball coach for extraordinary forty years, retiring after the twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen season, season. Over four decades, he led our basketball program to five hundred and twenty-four victories. Three regional final four championships, five regional championships, six regional runners-up, fourteen district champs, fourteen district runners-up, twelve district tournament champions, fourteen district tournament runners-up, four district coaches of the year, two regional coaches of the year. He coached over multiple district, uh, districts and conference reclassifications for Prince Edward County Public Schools. And had to include his very, very impactful quote that, as a student certainly heard from him, and I'm sure others have, "I don't call you son cause you're mine, I call you son because you shine." Athletics, former athletics director Rodney King called him an icon, and certainly that's not a word that's used lightly. Uh, Coach Scott is still very, very active and involved in the Prince Edward County Public Schools community through, of course, the ice cream truck, which he's very, very known for. But he's also the type of individual who will go and buy donuts for the transportation department and never say anything to anybody about it. Um, so, recommendation number one would be to name the Prince Edward County Middle School Gym Floor after Coach Scott. I will say, this was not something that came up, but as we think about future construction and what eventually the high school will look like, when we get the high school team playing in the high school, I would recommend, if I'm still on the board at that point, moving the name over to just name the full gym after him. Uh, I don't think that that was recommended at first because it wouldn't seem like it would do justice, and certainly we don't wanna change the name of the middle school gym. But once we get the high schoolers in the high school, I think that that would be an appropriate shift from the floor to the actual high school gymnasium. Okay, so that's the first one, and you've got the full document, and this can all, this will all be public too. The second, very, very long-tenured member is Coach James Baker, who's been assistant football coach for years, as well as a track coach indoor and outdoor for several years. So, at his forty-seven-year teaching and coaching career in Prince Edward County, has left a lasting legacy on our students' athletic programs in our community. Coach Baker's been a cornerstone of Prince Edward County Athletics since nineteen seventy-seven, served, serving as head track coach, assistant football coach. His leadership culminated in historic achievements in twenty-twenty, where he guided the girls indoor track team to the first ever VHSL Class Two State Championship. Later that same year, he was named Virginia State Girls Indoor Track Coach of the Year, and a, a very appropriate recognition for a coach of his caliber. He has coached numerous athletes, so many that I could barely find the data, because I know personally many athletes who have gone to run track, division one level, division two level, division three level, track and cross-country, all kind of talent ID spotted by Coach Baker. He also drives the bus, has a CDL, and will drive the buses to and from track meets, and he's just one of those very, very quiet leaders that would go, not necessarily unnoticed, but he would never toot his own horn. Um, because this one's a little bit harder to, uh, create data, uh, to find data for, from VHSL, um, I reached out to some of the track alumni, and on their own accord, they made a whole Facebook group of Prince Edward County Public Schools track alumni, and have been posting all sort of positive things about Coach Baker. I think that's a testament to him and his legacy in Prince Edward County Public Schools. So forty-seven years for Coach Baker, forty-plus years for Coach Scott. The recommendation would be for Coach Baker to name the track in honor of Coach Baker prior to indoor track season, which starts up pretty soon, and then the gym floor, Coach Scott, prior to the basketball season starting, which should be here fairly soon. I think that these two people, I know we worry about naming facilities and kind of the legacies of those, but you don't see, uh, takers like that very often, and the impact that both of them have, both on and off, kind of the court and gridiron, uh, it should be, should be recognized.
Any other kinds of questions, or, um, Mr. Townsend?
I'd just like to, uh, just commend both these, both these men for their, the example they've set forth. I had, was blessed in honor to coach basketball and track. And, uh, these accomplishments by these two men are above and beyond exemplary. Very appreciative of the example they've set forth for all of our kids for all this forty-plus years we've gone up them, so, they just speak sweeps and bounds.
I know something that she, she wrote about Coach Baker, that he could, he had this sixth sense, he could tell if a kid was an elementary school, whether they could run, you know, track. I was saying, he could pull it out, and it, it would come to fruition. That student would be on the team, and be doing great, he just had that sense. I don't know where he got it from.
He would turn a student who had never been thrown as much as a baseball into a state championship shot, but, and I just can't, I think that kind of sums up a lot of, kind of identification.
And, you know, but, Coach Scott, there's.
Coach the line on the footballs.
Sir.
I know, at what point that the court and the track gets their signage and everything, there'll be a ceremony there, but they can be fitting, you know, it's at the next board meeting, or whatever you think, Dr. Jones?
Yes, we would, um, I, I'd work with the, um, the administrative team to, we'll plan a ceremony for both.
That'd be fitting, and they're both here to smell their flowers, and that would be a phenomenal way to, to acknowledge them. Um, I will say, if, if, if it is of interest, I think I could get the committee, if we need somebody to help plan it.
Yes.
The same committee that worked on the naming, I think they'd be willing to also work for some type of commemorative effort for both of them, um, whether at an athletic, you know, sport banquet, or something separate at both of the sites, or something of both. Um, and I think either between, just in terms of logistical planning, I know this is a little off topic, but, um, it's probably been, not been too far, long enough to which, you know, whoever did that, and then the Barbara Jones Auditorium in the high school, and the Griffin Gymnasium at the middle school, um, to kind of price estimate, so we can figure out logistics and then that's kind of things.
So you're looking for a motion, right?
I would need a motion, but the, the policy says nothing about, so we can, we can decide the timeline as we go, but the vote, yeah, would be great, and make it official, and we can start planning.
Well, I move that we adopt, um, that we name the high school track, um, in honor of Coach James Baker, and the middle school gym floor in honor of James Scott.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, yeah. Thirteen?
Yes, ma'am. Well, um, Ms. Carson, members of the board, you know, um, right now it is, we talked about the different seasons. It is fall, and, but it's also the beginning of budget season. So as we start planning, we're only into November of the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, but we're starting to plan for the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year. And so I just came up with some draft Prince Edward County Public Schools, um, twenty-six, twenty-seven budget priorities, and they were included in your packet, and I just came up with, um, five bullets, or five points. Um, staff compensation and benefits, continue to prioritize competitive salaries and benefits to strengthen recruitment and retention efforts across all employee groups. Staffing analysis, review current staffing levels and identify areas of need to ensure the division is positioned to move forward effectively and efficiently. Capital projects, support ongoing and future capital improvements that enhance learning environment and address growth and modernization needs. Transportation fleet, maintain and update the transportation fleet to ensure safety, reliability and cost effectiveness. And immediate capital improvement needs, address critical facility and infrastructure needs that impact safety, operations and overall educational experience. These were just some areas, they are broad, that encompass a lot of things, but I think as you, as we go through our budget, through the budget development, that these would be our guiding priorities as, as we move through this process.
Any questions for Dr. Jones?
This is just for your information, if there's things that you'd like to add, I, we can bring them back for a vote if you want to, um, next month in December, or we just move, we can just, this will be guiding principles as we move forward. we can just, this will be guiding principles as we move forward.
I think it's one of these, our imperative, most important, so, I think it's a really good job to put.
Yes, sir.
We do intend to address all of these items as we're going through the budget process.
We do, yes, sir, we've been looking, we're looking at staff compensation and benefits. We're always looking at our, our current staffing levels and identifying areas where we may need to add positions, or maybe positions that we don't need, or maybe we need to reallocate positions for efficiency and effectiveness. And then, capital projects, I think, I know Prince Edward County, I've learned this, does a two-year capital improvement plan, and so, next year would be the, as the capital improvement plan's updated, that would be in the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year, just looking at what needs to be done. Transportation fleet, always looking, see if we need to upgrade some buses or vans that transport kids. And do we have some immediate capital improvement needs? Because one of the things that I've asked the principals of the building, the department heads here, is when they do a bunch of presentations, too, are there immediate needs that need to be addressed? So, we will do our best, yes, sir, to address every single one of these, as funding is available.
So, it's not that order?
No, but it could, well, I think staff compensation and benefits is a priority. And with that, we would look at the staff, so they all kind of flow in. One of the ones, I don't know how much we'd be building, because since we're just doing the elementary school, always reviewing the transportation, and then the immediate capital improvement needs, things that need to be addressed.
And I know we're not gonna start building anything soon, but I, and I do want us to come up with a capital improvement plan.
Yes, ma'am.
That says, okay, as soon as this is over, we're going straight to the board supervisors to ask for, you know, here's our five-year plan, in the next five years, where do we want to be? I'm hoping that we'll be in the midst of a high school renovation within the next five years. It's desperately needed, and the middle school needs sprucing up. And so, we just can't let it, we can't let it get to be a critical, well, I'd say the high school's very close to being in a critical need position, but, you know, where the roots are falling in, we just can't get it, let it get like that again.
Any other comments? Alright, thank you, Dr. Jones.
Thank you.
You go on to the floor change?
Yes, ma'am. So, on this, we've had a lot of discussion, you know, about mental health. Mental health is, is a topic you hear everywhere. So, I've asked Ms. McClure to come up and give, we gave her some information, you know, when we talked about the telehealth, the mental health, to give an update on what that will look like, the company that we are working with. So, Ms. McClure.
Good evening again, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Jones. I'm excited this evening to share with you an update on our mental health and wellness, and to introduce you to an upcoming launch that we will have with a company called Uwill. This collaboration is an important step in supporting our students and staff, and tonight's presentation will give you a quick overview of what's coming. We're grateful for this partnership with Uwill, and look forward to seeing the positive impact it's going to have for our school district. The current state of student mental health. Nationally, about half of the children in the United States will experience a diagnosable mental health condition at some point, yet only seven percent receive treatment in a given year. Schools are often on the front lines, but many simply don't have the resources to meet the growing demand. That gap can lead to crisis, absenteeism, and added strain on the job. Here in Virginia, you see the national, and then you can see the, the Virginia side. Here in Virginia, the data tells a similar story. Forty percent of high school students report feeling sad or hopeless, and that they've stopped doing their usual activities. And most of our school-based mental health professionals say they're seeing more students struggling with anxiety and depression than ever before. These numbers highlight why our partnership and proactive approach are timely and necessary. With Uwill, our partnership will provide a full range of mental health supports for students in grades K through twelve. We will have three programs. The first is Umatch, which connects students with licensed providers, available as early as the same day. Uhelp will ensure twenty-four-seven crisis support whenever it's needed. And Urise will promote wellness and prevention. And UCollaborate gives staff insight into how these services are being used, all while maintaining our privacy. Together, these tools will create a connected system of care available to every K-12 student. Umatch is designed to remove barriers students and families face when trying to access mental health care. Through the platform, students can self-schedule therapy sessions with a licensed professional, often with the same day or next day availability. These professionals specialize in working with children and adolescents, so they understand the unique challenges students face. They also represent a range of backgrounds and speak multiple languages, ensuring that students can connect with someone who understands their needs. Sessions are conducted virtually, providing flexibility and privacy while keeping care accessible. Umatch helps to prevent small concerns from being larger crisis, and ensures that every student has a clear, supportive path to care. The next, after Umatch, is the Uhelp, and this is the one, this is the one piece that no other provider had available, and this is why we chose Uwill. Uhelp is going to offer students immediate access to crisis support any time they need it, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. It is going to connect students in less than one minute directly to licensed counselors who are specially trained in crisis intervention. Importantly, we also conduct follow-ups, and when they, we say we, I'm talking about Uwill, the company, will do follow-ups at forty-eight hours, and then again at thirty days, to make sure that students have continued to receive the support that they need through and beyond the crisis. So, if you think about those students, you know, when they're thinking about suicide, and they're thinking about it between midnight and three AM, that's not during school hours, and that might not be necessarily Monday through Friday. And this program is going to bring those resources to our children. We have a customer success team to help us, we're not alone in doing this. The first is our dedicated school contact, which is Amy Griffin. She has been in contact with our principals as early as last week. Our division-level main contact is Elizabeth Shane, and then, and she's the one that I work with, and then the Virginia relationships manager is Adam Ring. We are truly excited about this partnership and the positive impact it will have on the mental health and well-being of our students. We think that this will build a stronger, more supportive ecosystem of mental health supports for every student, so they have the ability to thrive. We look for, forward to working closely with all of you, our staff, our families, and community as this gets off the ground and grows throughout the remainder of the year. Our set date for launch is December the first, and I have got a sneak peek, hot off the press, I just got it finalized this afternoon, of our FAQ document that will go out to parents, and so, I wanted you all to have a copy of that as well. I just wanted to take my test around, that'd be great.
Thank you, Ms. McClure.
You're welcome.
As she passes that, there are any questions for Ms. McClure?
Yes.
Actually, yours.
Yours, of course, first.
I watched it.
Alright, um, how much of the operation of Uwill have you or any staff member from here witnessed, or been in tune with, or seen in action?
So, we are not launching until December the first, so we have not seen.
So, you haven't seen.
No, ma'am, because we, we're not starting this program until December first. I wanted to bring it to you guys first.
Okay, that I understand. So, you're kind of choosing it side-on, see, to some degree.
We reviewed different companies, correct?
Yes, yes.
We reviewed different companies, and the one with, the reason we chose it was with Uwill is, if, if we go back a little earlier in the fall, you know, we had the grant, the three hundred thousand dollar grant that we got from the state that was telehealth, it had to be the telehealth services. And then, based on that, there were only certain companies that provide this, this service. And Ms. McClure went through it and worked with the different companies, and the reason we went with Uwill is that students have access twenty-four-seven, whereas the other companies, it might be Monday through Friday, eight to five.
Yeah.
So, so, this is probably new across the state. So, this is really like a new pilot.
And I will add that all of these programs were vetted by the Virginia Department of Education, they were approved by the Board of Education, and so, we were given the list of vendors approved by the Board of Education to choose from.
How will the program be evaluated to say, "It works for us, it worked for me"?
So, there, there's a, we will have a data dashboard, and it will, I can't remember the name of the specific test, but they do have psychological evaluations and tests. And at the administrative level here at the central office, we will have access to those programs, that data dashboard. Dr. Arietti?
Yeah, since we picked it because it has twenty-four-hour, seven days a week protection, accessibility, I meant, I was impressed that it, that it will respond to a student in need in less than a minute.
Yes, sir.
How is that enforced, and if it's, if it takes more than a minute, do we get our money back?
No, so it was a one-time fee.
Yeah, but how can they do it in less than a minute? There must be a queue, if, to a people.
Currently, Uwill serves over five hundred school districts across the United States, and so, I guess they have that data to, that they're able to accomplish that.
Do you know how many employees they have?
I do not know that information.
I'm gonna just say it out loud, I am sorry that we are going to telehealth. I think to ask, I, I, I see maybe at the high school level, maybe it might work, but I can't imagine a kindergartner sitting in front of a, a, a computer and being able to interact in any meaningful way with a therapist, and I'm saying it out loud. And it breaks my heart that our children are not going to have access to the counselors that they've been seeing in the schools in person. Because as someone who has had counseling herself, I know the value of that one-on-one relationship in person with the person, so I'm saying. And so, I guess, I, 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 how in the world are, well, you probably don't know off the top of your head, but it's my understanding that all the fulcrum counselors are full, that they have full loads at all three schools, is that correct?
I don't have that data in front of me.
Okay, it's my understanding that is the case. So, we have kindergartner Susie, who is, where's, how, help me, walk me through it, kindergartner Susie needs help. Where's she gonna sit? Who's gonna be in the room with her? How is, how will that work at the kindergarten level, or the, at the elementary level at all? Just help me understand that.
So, with this grant, this grant, we were mandated to use telehealth?
I know we have to, I know we do, I get it, that's what I'm saying, we don't have a choice, but.
At that level, I think it's in here, I'd have to look, but, um, you guys have the paper, and I don't have it anymore. But I think after, starting in sixth grade, yes, Virginia students younger than fourteen, it's on the back, Virginia students under, younger than fourteen, will have to get parent or guardian consent before their first therapy session, and they will have to send in a support form, and then the parent or guardian will need to be with the student.
And so, we have so many parents who don't have transportation, that don't even have a car to get here to sit in this first session.
It's virtual, this is all virtual.
Okay, but what if they don't have a computer?
They can do it on a phone.
What if they don't have a phone? I mean, I, 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 my point is, is that we have families who that, you know, you know as well as I do, that that's not gonna happen. I mean, that kids are going to not get it, and I, and so, I, I know we don't have a choice, I get that, but I am, I want it to be on the record, that it is appalling to me that anybody in the state legislature thought this was going to be a great idea. And so, I'm just saying, and it's not your fault, Ms. McClure, not us, and it's you. Once you know that, it says, you, I think you probably picked the very best of what we had to pick from, but.
I'd like it to be appalling on the record, that it's appalling to me too.
Yes.
I will, well, it is, it is a very sensitive situation. And it is, it, it looks like it's something that's evolving too.
Yes, sir.
And where, they've, right now, you know, because I, I have many questions about, how is that access going to occur, you know, in, in that shorter period of time? Is it a text-in type of a thing, is that what they're gonna do?
It's a live, virtual session.
Within a minute, and then, um, um, and then.
And that, I didn't mean to cut you off, that is, if it's an emergency.
Okay.
If not, if it's not an emergency call, then that would go through the Umatch program, and so, that, the Umatch program is where they match them with a counselor that maybe speaks their language, or matches with whatever issue it is that they may be dealing with.
So, it goes through Umatch, and actually, but actually, and then, how do we identify the students? Do we have tools that are gonna be in place to, to screen for students that are, that may need to have, go have counseling? Those, those are, I think, those are evolving questions that we, that I think we should, should come back to the board every once in a while.
Sure.
You know, and just to make sure that we're, you know, we're keeping up with.
I'm sorry.
And, and because when they say forty percent of Virginia high school students, that's, that's not, that's, that includes northern Virginia, that doesn't, that's not talking about this area. And when, when you, whenever you're, we're talking about Virginia and anything that concerns health and mental health, and how much money has been spent, it is skewed. So, we really need to look at, we really need to look at our, look at our environment too, it needs to be a little more specific for us, you know, when we're, when we're looking at these, when we're looking at things like that. We cannot compare ourselves to northern Virginia, or to some of those other counties. So, in, in our, we have to, we, and we should probably consider even having some assessment tools in place, to see if there's some, you know, how, how we actually measure up, and how we compare to, to the rest of the state. But, but I think it is an evolving thing, and so, if we're gonna bring it up, I think we, we shouldn't come up halfway with it, we should try to make it something that we would want to make sure that we are looking at, and we're serious about it.
Yes, sir.
Um, that's, that's what I think.
So, we do have a marketing campaign, Ms. Johnson, I've been working on how this will go out to parents, how the information will get out to parents, how it'll get out on social media, where it will be on our website, and so, it will be accessible to parents, because you asked about how they would get referred. So, they could get referred from their school, but they could say, "This is something that is available to you." But we're also trying to get the message out to parents, to let all parents in the community know.
I know how people are, they're not gonna do it unless, unless it's very easy for them, very accessible, very proud, that, and, and that they are, you know, and that they are not looked at differently from everybody else. So, they, they, you know, so, I mean, those are, those are, that's why it's evolving. You know, those are things that are likely to come up as this thing, as, I mean, we could, we could be dead just from the start, or we can make it into something that we'd like what to be.
Yeah, you know, those organizations make a lot of claims that are, sound very good, and are, and, and we're making a lot of judgment calls before it even gets started. You know, if this program saves even one kid, then it's, it's done. You know, if this program saves even one kid, then it's, it's done a great deal. So before we, you know, make a a a determination as to its effectiveness, then I I think, you know, we might be uh jumping the the gate a little bit. Maybe we should, you know, wait and and see how effective this program. Uh, I agree, it's evolving and as well as the entire state is. We can't uh compare ourselves to Virginia Beach or to Richmond or to northern Virginia. Uh, but at the same time, you know, if if we've got that, that third grader that is unique, which they all are, uh, it might be that third grader that gets on the line and and finds a a counselor that they can identify with and and finds some help uh that is remarkable. Uh, who are we to say that that won't happen? Uh, it may very well happen and uh, you know, I I I think we, we may be ju- jumping the gun a little bit. I I think it very well may be a program that that has some benefits. So that's just, uh, you know.
There's, there's not the jumping the gun issue.
I'm trying to maintain orders. Um, would it be possible for Amber or Elizabeth or Adam to either virtually or in person come to a meeting? And I think a lot of these questions would be this.
Absolutely, they actually offered to come tonight, and I told them it would be fine, I would do it.
Yeah.
So um, they they even offered tonight to come. So yes, we we can have them come.
Even the December meeting will be early enough, we can start on the first, to which we can still, you know, early enough in the pilot to ask them.
Would it be okay if they joined on Zoom or do you want them in person?
In person.
I mean, I don't know how far I have to jump.
It's possible in person, but they're.
I I I just wanna say that I believe that it is a good per, oh, I'm sorry.
Uh, the type of one did you have?
I was just gonna say, I mean, it's great that Prince Edward County Schools received this grant. Uh, every, I don't think every division in the state, in the state of Virginia received it, so. And again, uh, I think the research has been done, this is the best one to go with. And I agree with Doug, it saves one child over the course, they may choose to go online. Now, again, I don't think this is a, catch all, a program to go with only and phase out anything that we have going on right now. I think what we've got going on right now, the resources with our counselors, with Fulcrum, uh, we're a step ahead of a lot of divisions and a lot of schools in the state of Virginia, having the Fulcrum counselors in addition to providing that intense additional when we've seen the data and had them present before. So I think this is, I think it's a win-win because it's an added benefit for our families, for our children. I, and you know, I'm a former counselor as well, as far as, so anything that we can have that's added, I I I'm, I'm behind it. But again, maybe it'd be good to to have them come and present and just in order, because I think the more information we receive, we feel better about it.
I think we need to be clear that this is in place of Fulcrum Council. Fulcrum Council will be going away, oh, yes, it is. The 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 grant for Fulcrum is going away and this is what is replacing it. And that is why I am so not happy about it. Uh, that 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 we are going to have only telehealth unless we choose to pay for it, is that right, Dr. Jones?
So.
I think it's a problem with our legislature.
Fulcrum funding, I I wanna clear up a narrative about Fulcrum.
Okay.
Because about Fulcrum counselors has been in Prince Edward County Public Schools, just like a lot of surrounding divisions. And that was made possible from a grant from the Department of Education.
Right.
The Department of Education, when they did the the mental health grant, moved from in-person counseling
Yes.
to more, to online, which we were a recipient of one of the grants. We have adequate funding for Fulcrum through the end of February because based on how we've allocated our grant funds. And it's not that we want to get rid of Fulcrum as what people are saying.
Right, right. Yes, right.
We have to go based on the funding. And for us to maintain Fulcrum for March, for March and April, and and some of May, it's gonna be right around sixty thousand dollars. I have talked to Doug Stanley about that, the county administrator, about the funding, whether it's funded once the, once the twenty-four, twenty-five audit is complete, was there some um turnback funds, was there funds that were left that we could possibly use? Or perhaps the county could allocate some funding? And then we can look at funding here to see if we would keep Fulcrum. So.
Through the end of the year.
Through the end of the year. But the part I want to clarify that's going around is that Chip Jones said Fulcrum is out of here.
No.
Chip Jones has not said that.
That's right.
What Chip Jones has said is, we have funding through the end of February. The on, the telehealth grants provides a resource that is better than not having a resource. Especially in rural areas when access to mental health counseling is not the best. And everything that has been said here tonight, I probably agree with a lot of it. But I just know as the superintendent of Prince Edward County Public Schools and responsible for all these students that walk in and out of these doors along with staff, is that I'd rather have something in place than nothing. And I, that has just been, I can rest easier at night knowing that we have provided some type of resource than no resource. And if we can work to keep Fulcrum through the end of that, through the school year, we will do so. So.
And that's what I I I, when I was fussing and I'm saying I was appalled, I'm appalled that the state legislature decided to do it the way they did it. And I'm assuming when you say that that you, that U-Match is in five hundred different schools, that this has been used, I mean, I have to think that it's been used in other school divisions at the elementary level and it must be being successful. And I'm assuming that's how it got with the Department of Education or whoever proposed it. Um, because, I mean frankly, there will be more counselors available, whereas right now we just have one, and I'm assuming.
In each school.
At each school, so that, the access will be better. I just, my, my big fear is mostly for our younger children.
Sure, absolutely.
And that how a five-year-old is gonna bond with someone, I mean, that just feels like that. But again, they've been in five hundred schools, maybe it's working, but, so I don't want anybody to think that I, I.
And if, and if a parent's having difficulty accessing the computer or needs to meet with their kid, we will work with the family that we can find a space, a room, or somewhere for them to have access to a device that they can have the call. I can't, I don't know of a administrator or a person in Prince Edward County Public Schools who would say no to that. We, I mean, I, if they need to, they can come use my office, you know, and do those different kind of things. Because if there's a need, they just need to do, that's just.
Yeah.
And um, and I I I'm still, I still think that it should be, it's an evolving situation.
Yes, sir, absolutely.
That we should continue to monitor.
Absolutely.
How we're doing with it. And and I I, the superintendent makes a very good point, because it does, it it concerns accessibility. And and to mental health, that is a situation.
You're right.
Counselors are not available in this area. So we are gonna have to move towards telehealth and and those, uh, these types of resources for us. That, that's just a given now because of the availability nationwide. It's not just um, um, here, but especially in the rural areas. So that, those are, that's the situation. And um, and that is, it is addressing these situations of not having counselors available. That, I think that's part of what's going on with it. And um, this, and just trying to make sure that they are spread uh through some of those outlined areas where it's not available. So um, so, but I think it is still an evolving situation. And we still need to make sure that we use this tool as, to the best that we can.
One of the things going on that is that, you know, I made in some notes even before tonight's presentation that Ms. McClure and I would come back to the board in February to give an update of how things are going.
Okay.
Because we'll have to start in December, and then we will have December and January to give an update at that February meeting. This is what we've seen, this is the data that we have, just the prog, some progress monitoring along the way. So I, I made myself a little invite for that to put that up.
I got it.
Dr. Jones, will you know by our December meeting whether or not we're gonna be, find the approximately sixty thousand dollars?
That will depend on the final audit from the county.
Okay.
So, and I know they're in the, in the weeds of that right now.
Okay.
So Mr. Stanley and I have had conversations about.
Which will keep us.
Yes, ma'am, absolutely, I will absolutely, well.
Anything else?
Yes. Give me please, when I'm kinda stuck on how this thing is gonna look and feel real time. Um, what kind of training, maybe not to the extent that my brain is looking for, but some kind of of orientation to the parents for this program? Explain to them how it works and the like.
Um, I, so, that's a great question, um, I can't remember, I think there's a video, I can't, I honestly cannot remember. Um, but there's a whole marketing team, we've got marketing materials, they've met with our principals. Um, but I'm just being honest with you, I cannot remember. A lot going on right now.
Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Ms. McClure.
Thank you.
Um, we need to move on to number fourteen, Miss, can she, can we, activate this discussion?
Yes, so, changing gears just a little bit, um, I will have Mr. Foster come up, we'll take a little break from his duty right there to talk about where we are with work-based learning. So he's gonna give us a pretty uh synopsis of where we are and how we are growing that within Prince Edward County Public Schools. So, Mr. Foster.
Yes, sir. Very good afternoon.
A little lighter topic here, so it's a good, yeah.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, School Board members, and Dr. Jones. Um, as Dr. Jones said, I'll be talking with you guys tonight about um where we are with, with work-based learning and um some of our, some of our goals for the future. So the agenda's right there, where I'll go over the three E framework very briefly, uh, just as a reminder so you can see the importance of um work-based learning and um, and where we are. So on this slide right here, you can see uh in simple terms, this is pretty much as simple as you can get because this is a, uh, you know, the framework is pretty difficult. But you can see the um, the readiness component of the fr, the three E framework, it really is broken up into employment, enrollment, and enlistment. And so for employment, if you look at a student that has sequential courses and they have a high da, demand credential, and then plus they get work-based learning, they get a one point two five. Well, I have enrollment highlighted below it, so I wanted to show you the importance of work-based learning. Look at the dual enrollment, where a kid only gets, well, gets nine credits and they get a B in each class, they'll get a point for that. Well, the point two five at the enrollment category is um an associate's degree. So you're going from nine credits to earn an associate's degree and they only give you point two five for that. So same thing with the sequential courses and the credential, think about how important that work-based learning component is. It's equivalent going from nine credits to an associate's degree. Okay, so this is um our, our placements that we offer right now. The DOE is in a, a major transition with work-based learning and they went from twelve placement types to six. So we'll be offering internships, school-based enterprises, and clinical experiences. We still offer externships, but we are working hard to move from externships to complete internships. Um, the hours required for internships are ninety hours where externships were four. The externships are no longer recognized by the DOE. But again, um, we still have kids out there because they're getting exposure and it does, it does increase awareness of of career readiness and help students in many, many ways. Um, school-based enterprises, I'll talk more about that in just a, a few, actually, right now. I didn't know it was the next slide. Um, so school-based enterprises, we're looking to start three school-based enterprises this year. Um, in the spring semester, I'll actually be meeting with um Mr. Lee, I believe, on Friday to discuss some more details about this. But we wanna increase our exposure to these work-based learning placements, as many kids as we possibly can. And school-based enterprises are one way we can do it. So it's basically opening a, a business inside the school. And we can easily do that with our Eagle Cafe or with our culinary program, our automotive program, and our, our um basically agriculture program. Now, when I say Eagle Cafe, Eagle Automotive, um Eagle Greenhouse, and Plant Sales, those are not official names. Those are just the names that we have talked about in our CTE committee or, and work-based learning committee that we have. And we meet every, once every three weeks. And before I go into our specific partners, I really just wanna basically verbally thank um all our partners because without them, we wouldn't be able to even do this. Um, so I wanna extend our sincere appreciation to our partners and open up their businesses for our students to participate in placements with them. So this is where we are now. Um, and it'll take me a little bit to talk about this slide. So here I tell you the business and organization, the type of placement that we have, the career cluster it falls under, and our current students, you know, for fall and spring. At Prince Edward Animal Control, we have um three, I say possible interns because if we go from fall into spring, we have to change their schedule. And if they're up into that, we'll, we'll, they can continue in that internship. Um, so we're looking to have three internships, seven externships, and then as you go down, you can see where other students are placed. What's exciting is that we got two new partners very recently, and that's Airmark, which is one of our biggest, um, I mean, that's a, that's a very large um company, organization. And we will be sending nine to twelve kids there, starting this spring. Um, they are very anxious to have us. Um, Airmark is actually connected to a lot of the businesses in Farmville, like Chick-fil-A and some other um, and some other restaurants and organizations. But our students, like I said, will be going to Longwood and not toward that facility, um, their culinary department, and it was, it was amazing. I mean, they have, they have a tight, a tight ship there. And um they wanna basically provide our students with that experience. Another thing is that they'll be paid, so they'll be paid internships. Um, I believe it's either thirteen or fifteen dollars, it's one of them, I forget off the top of my head. Um, but they will start off as a paid, for this year, a paid externship. And so they'll work through that program and after the, the time that, if it's a good fit for that organization, that business, then they'll be offered a chance for employment. Next year, um, it'll just be all internships. And um, again, they said they can use them in the morning, they can use them in the afternoon, they can, they, they need help and we're, we're definitely willing to partner with them and provide that help. Um, WFOO is another um partner, and thanks to, I believe, Dr. Jones for opening that segue for us. Um, because he had some connections, he, he suggested it, and I reached out to them, and they are, um, they're anxious to take us one also. That will be primarily business, um, the business career cl, cluster because a lot of that goes into principles of marketing, um, and and that's a need for them. Um, looking forward, we might get some of our telecommunications students with them. And there's some exciting things that our students are gonna be able to do when they're placed there. We have a lot of fun activities for them, um, playing where they might even be given some um podcasts and things like that, actually talking on the radio. Um, Center Health and Farmville Health and Rehab, they're still our partners, uh, wanting to keep them on here. Especially, um, because, you know, not especially, because they give a, um, a great experience for our students. And we just don't have a teacher right now for that program. If we did, the students would be there. Um, the next slide, we opened our campus up really. Um, the next slide, we opened our campus up really to our students, so they can provide services on campus. Um, Mr. Davis was a um really a a key, Bruce Davis was a key um stakeholder and asking for this, like, hey, we could use some help. How about getting some of our students to help out with culinary? Would that just, I guess, open the gates? And I spoke with Mr. Crabtree and some other people, like with P E C P S Tech and Athletics for our students to be placed there. If we add all this up, you can see that we'll do better this year than last year, especially with the school-based enterprises, and we did phenomenal last year. So we're increasing our numbers and getting better year after year. Um, right now, it's projected to have forty externships, twenty-four internships, and again, with the school-based enterprises, I don't, I don't know the number, we could have, you know, twenty, thirty kids participate in that, and that's um gonna be very beneficial for accountability outcomes. So I wanna talk about Schoollinks for a second, because this does tie into um how we align all this, how we, how we're able to do it. Schoollinks is a platform that basically tracks uh placement and and post-secondary outcomes and course planning and career exploration for our school. Um, last year, you can see some of the details there of how often it was used by our students, and some of these things you can see from here is that Schoollinks is a very important program, from college applications to um the ACP that is created at the eighth grade level, and that stands for the Academic Career Plan that transfers over into the high school. And for getting it off the ground just last year and having these numbers um is is outstanding. And we can see that even this year is gonna, is gonna pass this, some of these milestones. The last slide, um where are we going for the two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six school year with Schoollinks? Now, it's gonna impact elementary and middle school, but I don't wanna sit here and talk the all, you know, all night about, you know, Schoollinks, cuz we're really focusing on the high school right now with the um with this. What we're gonna do with Schoollinks this year, we've already done some of these things, we attached the GPA um communication between Power School and Schoollinks to where AutoFields applications. We also, and I'm just now set it up just um two nights ago, where a student, when they get on the Schoollinks and they try to plan their schedule, they won't go, they won't take classes, and at the CTE level, that's misaligned, it won't let them do it. So we won't have misaligned pathways anymore, which has been a problem for um not just Prince Edward, it's, it's a pretty common problem uh in in really all districts. So Schoollinks will help prevent that. And the work-based learning platform, we'll be using Schoollinks for our work-based learning platform, where kids can get on, um fill out applications for a placement. They can do all their required forms associated with that work-based learning placement. It's really a one-stop shop for 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 that. And I guess that brings us to a- any questions? Yes, sir.
Am I right in hearing that all the internships and externships will include a stipend for the people involved? So they won't be laboring for free. I, there were many scandals of that in the past, that they were uh treated as slave labor, unpaid workers.
Um, no, no, I I don't think it's, you know, uh so the question is.
Is it true that they're all going to receive a wage for their work?
No, no, only only um Airmark. Airmark will be a paid internship, the other ones right now are unpaid internships, so.
And so how will we protect the student, the children, or the men and women who are doing the internships from being exploited?
Well, there's, I I visit, yeah, there there's some, I guess, some safeguards put in place, actually, um even, you know, outlined by the VDOE, that the work-based learning coordinator has to go in and actually do different things to ensure that, um, you know, some of these, ensure compliance with state and federal laws. So I do, I do make visits. Um, before we do a work-based learn placement, they come, become a partner of ours at the tour of the facility. I come back periodically and visit with the partners, I visit with the students, um and, you know, we we keep, keep our ear to the ground with regards to stuff like that.
I was gonna, just very briefly, we've had, we have an extern at Moten from Cumberland, senior, and they'll tell you. They'll tell you, and they might not not always know if that's valid, valid concern, but they'll, they're, they'll be very communicative if they feel like something odd is happening, or like if they're doing more than what they're supposed to be doing.
Yeah.
In particular, that last part, um they'll be very, very clear about that. This is my experience.
And the parent signs off on the um agreement for them to particip- participate in one of these placements, and they see beforehand some of the job duties that are gonna be re, you know, that the student's responsible for.
And it's a limited amount of time, cuz it's only your class time, so it's not like they're there eight or ten hours a day, they're there for a certain amount of time.
Yeah, about an hour and five minutes, yeah. And like the internship, the whole placement is just ninety hours, and that can be done, um, that's really done over a year's time.
I just wanna pick back on, but this is wonderful that we have this many partners already and just the additional two, this means that you can see additional ones. I know there's a student, I went to Flagstaff, I think, and he, one of our high schools students, and uh he commented, just you could just see the confidence that he had in in talking with me, and he's proud, he's making fifteen dollars now, so.
I think he was one of our students from our last year, that he was in our work.
It's back in the, it's back in the spring, uh spring summer.
They say it gave him the confidence to do.
I don't know his last name, but John, and we had a good conversation and followed what you were gonna go through, and I think it's just wonderful. Uh, kudos to the work that is taken up to this point and what we'll see in the future, and how this uh just gonna be wonderful for the experience that our kids are getting.
I think it's, I think it's getting ready to explode, actually, we're gonna really take off. Um, and had a meeting with um Chamber of Commerce today, even down, and might, might be able to get a, some partnerships there, so. And it's getting ready to take off.
Thank you. I have a question for Dr. Jones.
Yes, ma'am.
What does the future look like for additional programs or um career paths? Like HVAC?
So.
Electricity, or some of those construction more involved, um, career paths?
So, good question, Ms. Tibbs. So with that, you know, we still have the HVAC and the electricity programs at Southside, that we send kids, that we have kids that can go. And we're still doing that. Southside has just recently come out with, um, and they wanna have a conversation about, they just added a pathway for Forest Street, cuz we have a lot of forests in the area and different things. They can, we have the Teacher Academy with Southside, and then we have, um, uh there's an EMT, uh Emergency Medical Technician, a program that they're going to offer for, that we can be a part of, and there was one more, um, just so I remember off the top of my head, and then last week, um, I think it was last week, week, one of these weeks. I attended a, um, you know, we work with Kinesis that does vision screenings for some, for our students, and so I went to their, um, they had a celebration and they've been such a good partner to us, and I I serve on their Educational Advisory Committee, so I went to their event that they had the other week in Richmond, and I saw a gentleman that I'd connected with when I was in Cumberland, that um he wanted to reconnect on a brick mason program. So, and the reason that that had not been, that we weren't able to get that launched was the instructor piece, because it is a nine-week course. And so, but he is, thinks he has found two retired brick masons that are interested in being the instructors. So we're just doing some logistics right now of reconnecting of how that might look for Prince Edward County Public Schools. Basically, it's a nine-week course, I would imagine that's gonna have to be an evening course, but we would have to work through that, because it's hard to accommodate nine weeks. We can't make nine weeks over a semester, so we have to really work up how that look. So we're always looking to improve.
If we have kids that are involved in HVAC at Southside or Electrical or at New Forest Street, is it po- can we then put would they be eligible to do?
Yes.
Internship, say with any of the electrical companies or HVAC, like, like me or whoever?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
It would be, they may be able to work for them in the summer and get paid.
And get paid.
So it it would just depend on the partnership with the employer, so that's one of the things that, you know, this is, this has been a big focus for us really since July, is increasing our partnerships among the community, getting our students out in the community, and having them have opportunities to do things outside of the the regular schoo- school walls, and just, so, so kids can see the connection between what they learn in school and the community, and it just bridges this partnership, so. We've done a lot of fast-paced work over a little bit of time, but we've made a lot of connections.
And the, and the DOE just now, like I said, they're doing so many changes, they um, they've relaxed some of their, or they became more flexible, basically. Because we could not get the kids enough time within a semester to attach a cla- to attach an experience to, say, like if it was electrician, and they needed ninety hours. Well, prior, and I mean, like just last, last year, uh you, they said it had to be that class, that semester, where you can't do ninety hours in one semester. So now they have um basically broke it up to a year, and it doesn't even have to be done in a year, you could do it this year and then take a break and then do it again. As long as you get ninety hours in total, and it transfers amongst, you know, semesters and years, once you sign off on it and say that kid has ninety hours, then that's done. So that's gonna help us a lot with getting students into some of these trade programs like electrician, HVAC, and so forth.
And then one of the things that you talked about with Schoollinks and working with Mr. Lee and Ms. Tibbs in the high school is that we, we have to make a more concerted effort to ensure that our students, when they're taking courses, there's a sequential to it. And when there's a se- sequential to it, that the credential that they may be earning, a portable credential, however you may wanna say it, is, has a specific purpose, where it just can't be, in the past, we may have given the um NCRC, the National Career Readiness, where it counted as a credential that would satisfy graduation requirements, and it helps. But now DOE is looking at the regulations that a credential now has to be more specialized to the class. And so with that, there's an implementation to that, because in order for the teacher to give the credential, they have to take the test and earn the credential. So there, there are things that we have to work through to, so it's all, uh, it's a lot, and there's phases that we have to go through, but one of the initial phases that we wanted was to build that community partnership, so.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
I feel better.
Okay, we're on number fourteen, Tivie.
Yes, so in your unpacking, you saw that um we talked about our budget priorities, your legislative priorities, correct? Yes. So, you know, um, you allow me to be part of the Virginia Association of School Superintendents, and they have a staff and different people that go out and do, um, come up with priorities as we work with legislators, and I gave, and I put you a draft copy in this, um, and I just wanted to talk about, when we look at, when we, you know, if we go visit legislators and, or you have conversations with them, then it just gives priorities about where we are. Um, you know, we have a, we have a new governor, we have a new General Assembly, there's lots of new. Uh, and so it talks about um governance and budget that advocate for full state funding and mandates, um, the school that if somebody comes up with a mandate, it's easy to come up with a mandate, but there has to be funding that comes along with it. And then key funding recommendations to include adjusting the standards of quality formula, that's how schools operate. And then in your funding formula, there's um, there's a required local effort, there's a required local match. So one of the things in schools divisions such as Prince Edward, at-risk funding pays for a lot of people. It may be air support staff, it may be for teachers, it may be for paraprofessionals, but based on the current funding model in Virginia, there's an option at-risk is either, it's in the required local effort portion, but then it's also in the required local um match portion, where that funding's not always guaranteed. So moving all of the at-risk funding into what is required, so that has been an ongoing conversation, and then utilizing lottery casino profits, cuz, you know, casinos are prop- uh going up everywhere uh for school construction. And then um career technical education, and then um for, and then for s- uh for funding for substance abuse and training and different things like that, and to go off the conversation we had earlier about the mental health is, if there's ever funding put in for mental health, it may, it the division would need to look, we would need to look at, maybe it's more cost-effective us for us to hire our own counselors, where the counselors are ours. They are employees and staff members of Prince Edward County Public Schools, we don't contract that out, we don't do this, that they are our staff members. So we have a little, so we have more say-so in what they do and the different things, so maybe if there's funding tied to that, that they become ours. So, and we're able to set the caseloads and we're able to set this, and we're able to set the parameters. Um, outsourcing is good, when it's good for the right things, but it's also, sometimes it's better for it to be your own. And then teacher shortage, always, we just talked about competitive salaries, and then um retention, incentive, incentives, and then hiring flexibility that um you're able to, what is the function of the t- the position you want or not? Sometimes the standards of quality and the accreditation is all on the title, sometimes it needs to be more about the function of what the actual position that you need. Um, you know, still working through the cut score determination, you know, final um accreditation has not been finalized, nor has the plan for cut scores, and how that will look, and uh, maybe a phased approach for that, um, and then replacing the off-track category in school accreditation with need support, because people do a lot of work, and maybe the results don't always show all the work that you've done, and then you, it's easy to label something off-track, and that can do a lot to morale and the different work that people have done that needs support. Everyone always needs support, so, um, and then uh mental health support, I talked about that, and then more flexibility where, for dual enrollment, whether it's your academic courses or whether it's your CTE courses, that there really is no cost to the division whatsoever, so that's where we are. So that does a good job putting that together, it's a resource that's available to us, I don't know if you'd ever seen those in the past, they put those out every year, and um it's just been my practice to bring those before the board, so you can see, and if anybody ever asks you about this information, we have talking points about it, so.
All right. Calendar, next to Joe.
So on your calendar, you see the different things, um, next big thing we have coming up is interims are distributed, and then we have the VSBA convention. You have a packet there in front of you that Ms. Lee and Mr. Foster worked on, that is the nineteenth through the twenty-first, and I believe that everybody that is going to the uh conference, we are signed up for the early bird session, so um we'll be together bright and early on Wednesday morning. And then the next week, hard to believe, it's Thanksgiving time, and um
Christmas.
Then December, and um, so you see the different information, and I try to keep you updated, um, as much as I can. One of my favorite ceremonies as a school superintendent, actually, and it's, it's in Prince Edward, and it's where I was previously, is on December fourth, the Academic Jacket Ceremony at six o'clock. That is one of the most powerful ceremonies that I think anyone can attend, because that is a time when it is truly that child and their family and their moment to shine of all the work that has gone in to earn that jacket. That's probably my favorite, I love graduation, but I truly enjoy Academic Jacket Ceremony. So if you can come to anything, I would come to that. All right?
Question.
Yes, ma'am.
As I look at the calendar this year, and it goes into next year, I don't see anything that's.
I don't see anything that suggests an athletic banquet. Something beyond, as I heard one time, a throw together.
So.
So, a- a- as I'm looking here, I'm looking for, and somebody tell me, cause you know, I'll need to know. I don't want the time to get away from us and we don't take the time to celebrate all of the children athletic activities. Please plan for athletic banquet.
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Tibbs. So, all right. So next.
Superintendent's report.
Yeah, so you've heard a lot of information tonight, um, but I just wanna tell you some other things that are going on. Congratulations to Ms. Carson, Dr. Corbett, Ms. Kimbrough and Ms. Simpson for their winning their elections. And Ms. Stiff, you have two more months with us and we thank you for your service and your commitment, so. One, I say two. It's two of mine, it's still November, right? So we got two months. We got a lot to do in two months, but still. But just for your dedication to our students and community. Cause you are truly a community advocate. Yes. Um, the air band continues to shine. I think you, I hope you saw that, um, they had a strong performance last weekend competing against some pretty big high schools.
Yes, they did.
So, um, and I'm proud to say that some of the band members will participate in the town tree lighting on November twentieth. That is downtown.
It's November twentieth is the tree lighting.
Yes, ma'am. Schalasing Bowl is off to an excellent start, continues to perform well. Work-based learning, as you heard, we have that. Uh, we had STEM night in October, October twenty-second, as we all traveled back from Charlottesville. That was a huge success. Thank you to like James River Equipment. That was the first time they had been here. They brought a drone, a tractor, uh, one Gator and, uh, Southside Electric was here and different things, so. And James River was even talking about how it's more to incorporate activities for next year, so they were excited. I think we have STEM night two in the spring, so, um. Elementary school celebrated their character day. And then throughout the month of October, we, uh, focused on bullying prevention, so, um. And then across the schools, I can't say enough about our schools, elementary, middle, high school, CTE, just celebrating our improved student attendance, so we celebrate the growth. Not everyone's perfect, but we are celebrating that. Monday, we had a successful take your legislator to lunch. We took a, um, tour of the schools and then we traveled over to the culinary arts. Thank you, Mr. Lee and Mr. McClellan. Delicious lunch and personalized cookies that we made with the, what's it called, Eddie? The cookie edible machine, um, that they take your legislator to lunch cookies, so it was always good. We celebrated our transportation staff for school transportation week with different treats and different things. Um, we had over forty Longwood students visit our table at the Longwood Career Fair. So Mr. Balducci and Ms. Watkins did an excellent job. And, um, Ms. Eames Walton helped set that up and so it was good, so over forty. We had a group of students that traveled to JMU and then we had all. Our business students went to the Washington Commander's Business Day. Um, the high school, the athletic department is for the American Heart Association is doing a golf and swim challenge. This week, they're doing, having a putt and green out in the hole before you go to the cafeteria to do a little putting. I did some putting today and one, it went in the hole and it bounced out, so, um, you know. It really did, didn't it, Ms. Stiff? It didn't count. My dollar counted, but that didn't count. And then, you know, with that, um, as you can see, there's a lot going on. Just appreciation to everyone that works in Prince Everett County Public Schools and is here every day. There's lots of, you know, you don't always hear all the positive things, but there are so many good things that happen in this school division inside these walls on a daily basis. And the people make it happen, so that's my update.
Uh, quickly, uh, school's number comment, Ms.?
Yes, sir.
I personally, um, want to wish, uh, Ms. Stiff the, uh, uh, happy retirement from the school board. I, um, wanna commend her for, her insight, I mean, so with the years I've been on the school board and her compassion, uh, for even the most, uh, vile of disciplinary, um, results. And I, I've learned a lot, uh, from you and I wanna thank you, uh, for your service, uh, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Well, since we're being mushy towards Azora, let me also say, I was gonna wait till December and I still will. But Azora will be the first retiree of the inaugural, like the first ever elected members of the Prince Everett County School Board. Who are all four sitting in this room, and I just want to acknowledge that on the, the record. So a person who had every reason to abandon this county and never look back, to come back and be one of the first ever members elected to the Prince Everett County School Board, I think is a phenomenal accomplishment that you wouldn't probably say about yourself, so I will. So we appreciate you and we will certainly miss you. Goodbye morning. Also, in addition, um, had a great conversation with Dr. Jones and with Ms. Garrett about how to involve students more with motivation, so expect to follow up on that soon. Got some good things being planned. Um, wanna say how, how much fun it looked like the students had at the elementary school for character day. Uh, my two cheerleader and a, and a vampire, uh, I assure you their characters every day, but that day they got to dress up too, so. Um, they had a really good time there and really cool to see kind of the school showing, showing that spirit. Um, couple of thank y'alls, um, of course thank y'all for the encouragement with the VSB A, uh, support. I'll get that document. I think they saw it and get a certificate now. They're trying to make sure I get my certificate next time. Cause I also will be on the credentials committee at the conference of school, I won't get there, so they won't certainly be putting me to work. But I wanna appreciate y'all's endorsement and, and, and that, uh, support. Um, additionally, I thank you for the support, Coach Baker and Coach Scott. I mean, I, I truly think they're both outstanding. Um, one taught me how to run, one taught me how to drive, uh, and they, there are thousands of other students who've been interacting with both of them in that same way. So, um, just wanna thank y'all for that support of them and I think this is gonna be a great accomplishment. And I'm glad they're here to smell their flowers and so I hope we, we, we can celebrate them. Um, I think that that is it for my, and congratulations to everybody else who won their elections as well.
I likewise like to commend Azora, um, thank you. I've only been on board a little over two years, but, uh, just right off the get-go, your passion, your love is exuberating for our kids and staff and you feel that, feel that every time. I'm with you, uh, whether it's the board meetings and, uh, and your presence, so thank you. Uh, also, uh, Dr. Jones sent us a, um, a podcast, it was a podcast, uh, where him, Doug Stanley and Kane Townsen, uh, were, uh, I think it was the Virginia of Counties, uh.
They co.
Podcast, they co, so, uh, I got to listen to that last night. Was able to listen to all of it before I fell asleep for, uh.
Put you to sleep.
Put you to sleep, but, uh, it was very uplifting and very informative. And, uh, I think it just helps to, uh, spread that word about our schools about the, the division and, and what's needed and that awareness, what brings more awareness when you have the opportunity to have the executive director, I think his name was, Mr. Bennett?
Jeremy Bennett.
Jeremy Bennett, so, so thank you for that, uh, those.
We did it on Halloween.
Because that takes time, so those type of things takes time. And lastly, I'd just like to give a shout out to our schools, to our administrative staff, teachers. Uh, just looking at the attendance improvement from, uh, looking at October this, you know, and, and going back to last year. So, uh, just a shout out and just the growth in our student membership, uh, thus far. Uh, and that adjusting membership, so we're looking at that cause it will help keep our funding up. So it's, it's a one day to one week to one month. And so that takes a lot of work at the school level with the incentives that you're, that you have and you're planning for, so, so thank you all.
Nick? Um, well, I'm, I'm glad, I'm, I'm thankful that I was re-elected back to the board again.
I am too.
I'm very, uh, thankful for the communities for supporting me and getting us back, getting me back on the board. Uh, it's good that, you know, I, I, we had a good meeting in Charlottesville, um, um, on October the twenty-second. And I couldn't think of a word to say at that time, but as soon as I walked out the door, I thought of the word.
What is it?
This is a refresh.
Refresh, okay.
Refresh. And, um, that's where, that's where we are, uh, with the board. And Ms. Stiff, I, I, it is just a pleasure and an honor to work with you on, on the board. I, I just, I'm gonna miss your questions, the ones that, that, that come up that I, I'm, that I'm thinking is probably, most of the time is the elephant in the room or something like that, that we should make sure that we address. Um, and, um, and, um, I'm looking forward to serving again with this group.
I promise not to be long. I was gonna wait till December to say anything, but I, no, I'll say it again. But I also appreciate, um, getting re-elected, um, to the board. It's been an experience the last four years and, um, I'm looking forward to the next four years. And I also agree with your word about the reset. And then, you know, Azora, you, you were one of the first people I met before I, uh, even we met before I ever even stepped foot in this room. And, um, we haven't always agreed on every single thing, but we both, I, I've never ever, I've always known that your heart and your passion was for children. And, uh, and to make sure that we do right by children. And I promise you, we will continue to do that even if you are not in this room. And thank you for being, um, a friend to me and I appreciate it, so I will, will miss you a lot.
Thank you.
We need to go back into closed session.
I'm gonna go back into closed session.
Second.
All in favor? Right?
What if we didn't vote for it?
We still have.
Don't forget to check your packets out for the.
Are you? Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, this is my house. So y'all come on.
I made a motion to Harvey.
Okay, this roll call vote is certified at the best of each member's knowledge. Only public business matters lawfully exempted from opening meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. Only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed session were heard, discussed, or considered during closed session. Yes, Mr. Jones and Mr. Dr. Kennedy?
Yes.
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 All right, thank you.
I move that we accept the personnel list as proposed by Dr. Jones.
Second.
As second. All in favor?
Everybody.
Everybody. And who seconded that? Was that you, Mr. Farley?
No.
And who's?
I'd like to make a motion that we honor the students' appeal by allowing her to go back to, go back to regular school on January 6th.
Second.
Second. All in favor? Can I need to work the one?
I make a motion to adjourn.
All in, oh, second, did somebody second?
I did, or he did. Anybody, we all did.
In that case, all in favor?